Go ahead and get started. Apologies for our late start. We had some long discussions and presentations upstairs in our pre-meeting. All right, I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Trenton Magid, David Roseacher, Michael Pate, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Christine Carnes, our Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslau, Planning Director, Eric England, Acting Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Acting Current Planning Manager. From the Law Department is Jennifer Taylor, and Lisa Agins is our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. Over here, you are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, have already been heard, or been recommended for layover, and therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponent. Then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to ten minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information, and try not to repeat what is previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cellphones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. Rezoning matters are an exception to this rule. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder on the east wall of this room. Before getting to the consent cases, we have two changes. We are going to add Agenda Item Number Nine to the consent agenda, and we're adding it as a layover. And Agenda, excuse me, Agenda Item Number Thirteen, we are going to change from approval We will get started with the reading of the consent cases. Agenda Item Number Three, Case C-8-19-85, C-12-19-51. Applicant, Stephen Kramer. It is on consent for approval. The request, preliminary and final plat approval of Christian Acres, a minor plat outside the city limits with a waiver to Section 5399 sidewalks. This was laid over from our April Planning Board meeting, along with approval of a special use permit to allow development within the ED Environmental Overlay District, location 12424 North 60th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none, Agenda Item Number Four, Case C-14-18-263. Applicant, Planning Board. It is on for approval. The request, vacation of the remaining portion of the East-West Alley, east of 51st Street, between Walnut and Hickory Streets, abutting lots 10, 11, and 12, Block 28, West Side Edition. This was laid over from our December meeting. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay. Seeing none, I'll continue on. Agenda Item Number Nine, Case C-3-19-65. Applicant, Planning Department, on behalf of the City of Omaha. This has been added. This is on for layover. The request is approval of the disposal of city-owned property to an interested party. Location, 1306 South 12th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none, Agenda Item Number Twelve, Case C-10-19-68, C-12-19-69. Applicant, Gotch Enterprises. It is on for approval. The request, preliminary and final plat approval of High Point Replat 9, a minor plat located inside the city limits with rezoning from R6 to DR and CC, and approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District, location southeast of Veterans Drive and 204th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Case C-10-19-70, C-12-19-71. Applicant, AVG CFM 204Q LLC. This was changed from approval to a layover. The request, preliminary and final plat approval of Coventry Replat 12, a minor plat located outside the city limits, along with rezoning from DR to DR and R4. Location, southwest of 210th Street and George B. Lake Parkway. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Case C-10-19-76, C-12-19-77. Applicant, Pacific 90 LLC. This is on for layover. The request, preliminary and final plat approval of Pacific Hill, a minor plat located inside the city limits with a waiver of Section 5384A lot depth, along with rezoning from R2 to DR and R4. Location, 1018 South 90th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Case C-10-19-78, C-12-19-79. Applicant, CC Military LLC. It is on for approval. Request, preliminary and final plat approval of Copper Creek Replat 1, a minor plat located outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R5. A portion of the property is located within the Flood Fringe Overlay District, location southeast of 168th Street and Military Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Case C-10-19-80. Applicant, Chris Erickson, for a three-minute Rocket Wash LLC. It is on for approval. Request, approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District, location 617 and 707 North 204th Ave., Circle. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Eighteen, Case C-10-19-81. Applicant, Bucks Inc. It is on for approval. Request, approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District, location 1225 and 1303 North 205th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, Case C-10-19-82. Applicant, Darren Smith. It is on for approval. Request, rezoning from R7 to NBD, location 2226 N Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty, Case C-10-5-64. Applicant, Mark Sanford. It is on for layover. Request, major amendment to the Mixed Use District Development Agreement for Torrey Square to allow multifamily residential. Location, 3833 North 153rd Street. Does anyone wish to have this? Okay, that will be removed. And that's Agenda Item Number Twenty. Thank you, sir. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Twenty-One, Case C-11-19-83. Pacific 90 LLC is the applicant. It is on for layover. Request, approval of a PUR Plan Unit redevelopment. Location, 1018 South 90th. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. The last item is Agenda Item Number Twenty-Three, Case C-14-19-86. Applicant, Planning Department, on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request, vacation of the Isard Street right-of-way between 20th and 21st Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion for consent items that are on for approval?
I have a motion for approval of Agenda Items Number Three, Four, Twelve, Sixteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, Nineteen, and Twenty-Three.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Magid?
Yes.
Roseacher?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, do we have a motion for the consent for layover?
Motion to layover, Case Numbers Nine, Thirteen, Fifteen, and Twenty-One.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Roseacher?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, thank you. Those cases that were on for consent and have just been voted on, they're done for the day. If you were here for one of those cases, there'll be no action taken on those cases. You're welcome to leave, or you're welcome to stay. The first two cases are administrative cases only, and that means there will not be any opportunity for public testimony unless a Board member would ask for information. Agenda Item Number One is Case C-10-18-273, C-12-18-274. Applicant, Heinz Interest LP Brad Soderwall. Request, final plat approval of Central Park East Replat 3, lots 1 through 10, outlots A and B, a subdivision inside the city limits with expansion of the ACI-1 Overlay District. Location, southeast of 10th and Farnham Streets. Eric, are you presenting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so as you mentioned, final plat for Central Park East Replat 3. This is 10 lots and two outlots. The preliminary plat, along with a waiver of lot frontage, was previously recommended by the Planning Board and approved by City Council with same conditions on February 26th. The applicant has submitted final plat for review. This final plat is consistent with the approved preliminary plat. There are a few items that the applicant is still coordinating, their efforts primarily with Public Works Department, and specifically acceptable design for Harney Street, the design of the intersection of 8th and Farnham Streets with the Riverfront Development Group, as well as final approved traffic study. So staff is recommending approval of the expansion of the ACI-1 Overlay District, approval of the final plat subject to submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to City Council.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Are there any comments or questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I might, I don't know if the developer is in the audience or developer's rep, but I do have a question on the site.
Members of the Board, Larry Jovan, 11440 Weston Road, appearing on behalf of the developer.
Thanks, Larry. So we had quite a conversation a little bit earlier in pre-meeting today about that stretch along Harney Street, which is going to be kind of a plaza area, where you're going to extend Harney.
Correct.
And it's going to be kind of a parkway, kind of a plaza area, a lot of walking traffic. Question I asked, was there going to be any kind of protection barriers or anything between the sidewalk and the streets that were going to prevent cars from jumping the curb? Because you're asking for a curb reduction.
Right.
In there as well. For the safety of the pedestrians.
There are bollards, I believe, that are being proposed. There's been ongoing discussions between Planning, Public Works, and Developer, but I believe they were planning on installing bollards for the protection of the pedestrians.
Okay, because it's pretty much street level there.
Right, yes.
And obviously, we don't want any kind of intentional or unintentional accident to occur along that stretch there, even though there's traffic control devices in there. But it's just, you know, pretty level with the street. So if you're pretty confident that there's going to be bollards?
Yes.
In there?
I believe, Mr. England, have you been in? I know that there's been a number of meetings, and then we're meeting almost every other week with the Planning Department, Public Works Department, and I know that early on they were talking about bollards being placed along the roadway. I think they're still being placed.
I haven't personally been involved. I'd probably call it Public Works if they had more information on that. I don't know if specifically Ryan has been involved with those. There was a few design elements mentioned to me recently, but I don't want to misspeak.
Hi, I'm Terry Morrison, 3552 Farnham Street, with Earhart Griffin &amp; Associates here on behalf of the developer. At one time, there was discussion of having bollards. Those have since been removed, but there will be street trees that go along the edge of the street, as well as the street planters will have some curbs. We're still working on the height of those curbs. They're probably four to six inches, but between the planters and the trees, it creates a pretty good barrier between the street and the pedestrian area.
And is that, are those installed there for that purpose, is to protect the pedestrians along the parkway?
Not necessarily. They're there to meet the landscaping requirement, but they kind of serve a dual purpose. And we are meeting, there's a state statute about horizontal clear zones in this type of situation, and we are meeting that horizontal clear zone.
Yeah, I'm just interested to make sure that the public is protected as much as possible because in today's world, you just don't know what's liable to occur. Why did you pull the bollards out?
It creates, I guess, speaking aesthetically, I'm an engineer, I'm not quite on the realm of the aesthetics, but it kind of creates a barrier, if you will, to the pedestrians. And based on all of the similar type developments that the developer has toured and based this design off of, they're really unnecessary. Because of the slow speeds, you know, there's lots of pedestrians, like I said, there's lots of landscaping and trees, you know, it promotes slow speeds with the traffic. And with the design, we have a plaza in the middle of the one block where the lanes are split, so it really gives the driver a feel, a sense to slow, that they're in a pedestrian area.
I think there was a website or something, wasn't there, that showed the renderings of what potentially, with the potential development.
I'm not sure if there was a website, but there's been lots of presentations.
Yeah, I've seen a couple of them.
And is the Harney Street access, is that to replace the ConAgra Drive that is currently there at an angle? So if people are going to the Chamber or any of those office buildings down there, they'll turn on Harney and then get on ConAgra Drive to go down?
Yeah, correct. Harney will be extended directly east of Harney and 10th Street right now for two blocks. It will have a T-intersection with the current ConAgra Drive, right where the existing ConAgra Drive takes a diagonal. That's kind of where it'll connect now, so it'll be more of a 90-degree intersection now.
So is that Harney Street extension, is that there for traffic flow? We had quite a conversation, why is it even, why is that road even going to be in there? Is it for traffic flow?
I think I can answer that one. Actually, it was really to extend the grid system to 8th Street to bring the pedestrian and vehicular traffic to the American Park, over the Heartland of America Park. So the idea was to really just extend the grid system down to 8th Street. Also, if you notice, there's some buildable lots on the east side of 8th Street, so it was to bring access to them as well. So that's really what it was designed to do.
Isn't there access to the parking garage as well?
The parking garage. The parking garage beside the apartments?
Yes, that's right. And I think that's also off Farnham Street as well, as far as the access to the parking garage to the north. But it was really just to complete the grid system and bring the people closer to the Heartland of America Park, as well as the buildable lots. You'll notice it's lot two and three, shown, east of the 8th Street.
Okay, thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
I guess what most of us seem to be struggling with is that, most of the time, we try to separate and define, you know, vehicular traffic from pedestrian traffic. And here, we are encouraging the intermingling of it, and it just seems kind of schizophrenic.
Yeah, not so much. I mean, this is what was shown at the preliminary plat. Nothing has changed between the preliminary plat and the final plat. I mean, this was the same rendering, same drawing, same ideas. I think the idea is to slow between that middle, I think it's Lot 10, if I recall correctly, it's going to be the interior portion between the two streets from 10th to, if you will, the ConAgra Drive accessory. That's going to be all landscaped and trees, and it's going to be, you know, it's designed to slow traffic way down so it can mingle with pedestrian traffic as well. So this is the whole idea behind this, promenade, if you will, to bring an attractive feel to this part of the development between 10th Street and 9th Street. And then it goes back narrow and is more of a street system between 9th and 8th along Harney. So this has been the concept really since the beginning, so nothing has changed. I would have brought everything down with me, but this was administrative. I think I got in trouble last time for pulling this off.
I guess in our drawings.
You know, you look at it a little bit differently. Because you've seen, we've seen this, you know.
No, and they're legitimate questions, and I know we've been meeting, you know, like you said, every two weeks, and then those are off and on sometimes. But I know early on, we talked about bollards, and then we talked about, you know, more of the pedestrian feel, but you have to get some traffic down to those other buildable lots on the east side of 8th Street, so.
I guess it's just, you know, in our drawings, in all due respect, we didn't see a section that showed a one-inch curb, so.
Oh.
Just to echo, I think it was very confusing to us. The purpose of the one-inch curb is to make it pedestrian-friendly, but then it's still a street. So if you can access those lots and the parking garage from 8th Street and Farnham, we didn't, it was a little bit confusing to us why you would encourage pedestrians to be in a street.
And I think those are more design-type issues that you typically don't see at the Planning Board level, or even the City Council level for that matter. But that was the design as originally contemplated, so I apologize if you didn't understand that, but that's the way it was designed.
Yeah, we hadn't seen that before.
Any other questions for Larry or Terry? Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, we have a here from the city.
I gave my recommendation already. I guess, you know, I would add, you know, my understanding of what those negotiations or what those conversations for the elements of the subdivision agreement are still ongoing. So, you know, I don't want to misrepresent anything that I told you.
Okay. All right. Second. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Roseacher?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda Item Number Two, Case C-10-18-134, C-12-18-135. Applicant, Omnicorp Saddle Creek LLC. Request, final plat approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District, Request final plat approval of Poppleton Park Replat III. A subdivision inside the city limits with rezoning from R-3 and G-C to R-5 and C-C. Location, northeast of Saddle Creek Road and Davenport Street. Eric?
Yeah, so this is an updated final plat of Poppleton Park Replat III. You had originally voted on several items back on the January planning board meeting, including the preliminary and final plat, as well as the PUR rezoning and vacation. The reason this updated plat is before you is the proposed townhomes on the eastern portion of the site fronting 44th Street. Those were originally five platted lots for the five townhome units. In the time since planning board and before going on to city council, the applicant has expressed desire to combine all of those lots into one lot, still have the same proposed number of five townhome units, but just the one lot. And we didn't want our documentation to go on to city council reflecting that you had voted on seven lots, and now there's only three lots. So, we thought it was in the, the best interest to bring it back before the board. Other than that, the, the plan has not changed from when you last saw it in January. They're still working on some final items with the subdivision agreement, as well as the final PUR plan before it can go on to city council. There are just a few items that we wanted to reflect with this review about showing an access easement for that Lot 3, which is the townhome lot. And then also just some clarification on making sure the vacation is all wrapped up together. Part of the vacation of the alley is being done with the plat. There's another portion that has to be done as a separate request. So, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from R-3 and G-C to R-5 and C-C, and approval of the final plat subject to the three conditions in the recommendation report prior to city council.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
I'm looking for approval of the rezoning from R-3 and G-C to R-5 and C-C, and approval of the final plat subject to addressing the three conditions in the department's recommendation report prior to forwarding the request to the city council.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda items five through nine, you're presenting correct?
Yes.
Okay? Five through eight, I'm sorry. Agenda item number five, case C-3-19-61. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the disposal of city-owned property to an interested party. Location, 2306 North 24th Street. Eric?
Yeah, so I'll give a, a brief summary, and then you can call for proponents, opponents, and then we'll get to the recommendation. So, this first item is a, a commercial property, just under 5,000 square feet in size. This request would dispose it, not, transfer this property to Omaha Economic Development Corporation to assist in community redevelopment efforts along North 24th Street. State law allows for this transfer. The Omaha Economic Development Corporation would work with an interested party on redevelopment of that site. The, the building is in rather poor condition, and we had looked at demolition, so we are encouraged by the fact that any potential redevelopment and keep the building would be of benefit.
Okay. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. You've already given your, your recommendation.
Recommend approval, yep.
Any questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
A motion for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number six, case C-3-19-62. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the disposal of city-owned property under community development law. Location, 4001, 4005, 4009 North 33rd Street and 2708 Fort Street. Eric?
So, this would allow the transfer of four parcels, total size approximately just over 21,000 square feet. The transfer would go to Omaha Permaculture, which would be used for urban garden lots to assist in community development efforts.
Okay. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public test, uh, public hearing.
Recommend approval.
Okay. Any comments, questions?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number seven, case C-3-19-63. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the disposal of city-owned property under community development law. Location, 2803, 2807 and 2811 North 19th Avenue. Eric?
So, this request would transfer three parcels, approximately a little less than 14,000 total square feet in size, to Kinghorn Horticultural Services. This would serve two purposes, primarily to account for the post-construction stormwater management plan. The city has recently constructed several new houses along this stretch in the Locus-Glen Development, as well as the extension of 19th Avenue and Corby Street. With those new structures, we, we needed an area for detention. So, the second part of the benefit is it allows Kinghorn Horticulture to provide a heavily landscaped area that can serve as an open area that would be available to the public to, to access as well. So, it'd serve both those purposes with this transfer.
Okay. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. You want to give your recommendation?
Yeah, sorry. A per.
Any comments, questions, or a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Magid?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number eight, case C-3-19-64. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the disposal of city-owned property under community development law. Location, 3706 Ohio Street, 3605, 3604, 3602 Erskine Street, 2608 North 33rd Street, 3612, 3624 Brown Street, 5115 North 37th Street. Eric, may we hear it from the applicant?
Okay. Yeah, this last request that I'll be presenting is the transfer of eight parcels, a little over two acres in size, to Holy Name Housing Corporation for the future development of single-family residences. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Recommend approval.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number 10, case C-3-19-66. Applicant, Omnicorp Saddle Creek LLC. Request approval of the Saddle Creek at Davenport TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, southeast of Wakely Street and Saddle Creek Road. Bridget, you're presenting. Thank you.
Good afternoon to the board members. Before you is the Saddle Creek at Davenport TIF redevelopment project plan, which relates to case number, or item number two on the agenda that you've already talked about. This particular TIF project proposes 532,500 in TIF, which represents about 8.5% of the total funding of this project. As Eric had mentioned earlier, there are several parcels that are a part of this project, and the proposal is to demo the site, clear it, and prepare it for the new construction of two one-story commercial properties. And before I go too much further, so what I have here on the screen is the site in blue and yellow. The blue happens to represent the right-of-way that the applicant is purchasing from the city, and the contract was approved by the city council at the April 23rd council hearing. The yellow represents the remainder of the site. So, this is Wakely, Saddle Creek Road, Davenport, and then North 44th Street. So, it, it composes almost the entire block except this particular parcel here. The commercial, the what-to, commercial buildings, one-story commercial buildings will front Saddle Creek, and basically comprise most of this area. And then the five unit, five units of townhomes will be fronting North 44th Street. And those townhomes are proposed to be one-and-a-half-story townhomes, two-to-three bedrooms, two-car garages. They're proposed to be for sale or maybe for rent. The developer is weighing those options. Let's see. As far as the land use, the land use is appropriate according to the zoning. It, it is currently zoned R-3 residential and G-C zoning, however, with the agenda item number two, the proposed rezoning is to R-5, C-C, M-C zoning with a PUR. As far as public improvements are concerned, the public improvements include streetscaping and landscaping, some right-of-way, of course, the vacation of the alley, some public utility work, curbing gutters and sidewalks are proposed. This project does comply with the city's master plan and has received approval from the TIF committee. So, I do, just another aerial view of the site. And this is looking southeast, so Saddle Creek, Wakely. And then, I believe in your package should be some of the elevation. So, these are the elevations of the townhomes. And the front elevation and left elevation, left, I believe, would be the south, I think, elevation of the commercial property. And with that, I would ask for your approval and recommendation, and I know the attorney is here representing the applicant as well.
Any other proponents that wish to speak?
Good afternoon, Ken Dorvigenberg. I'm here on behalf of the developers. Do you have any questions for me? Address is 9500 West Dodge Road.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number 11, case C-3-19-67. Applicant, Quality Processing Services LLC. Request approval of the Quality Refrigerated Services III TIF redevelopment plan. Location, 4115 South 33rd Street. Bridget, may we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon, Ken.
We're members.
Or representing the applicant, I should say.
Yeah, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. So, this is the TIF project for Quality Refrigerated Services III. It represents, this is their third TIF project. This aerial shows the proposed site highlighted in blue. Over to the west is the existing site of Quality Refrigerated Services. Although there is a building shown on this particular aerial, this is an old aerial. This was Darlin National. That building was demolished a year or two ago. So, this is a vacant site right now, and the proposal is to add at least a 33,700-square-foot warehouse onto this building, which encroaches on the new parcel that they purchased. So, I don't know if you can kind of see, but what I've highlighted in yellow is basically the outline of the new building, which takes up about two-thirds of the site that they've purchased. So, again, it's a 33,700-square-foot warehouse that will allow for additional cooler and freezer storage for their, their cold storage and meat processing business, allows for expansion. They anticipate hiring six new full-time equivalent. And I do have, this is the most recent rendering that I received. I don't know if you can zoom in a little bit, but this is the existing building. This is an entryway, so it kind of sits back a little bit, but this is the proposal for the, the new warehouse. The land use is appropriate because this is zone, this area is zone HI, heavy industrial, so there are no proposals for changing the zoning. Public improvements are very minimal, as if I can, if I go back. Particular site sets way back from the right-of-way. This is H Street, 33rd Street. You have to, the site isn't even accessed until you get past what would be G Street, but it is not a N Street. And then to the west, north, and then to the east, primarily railway, and then of course, F Street. So, they're kind of landlocked, so this was a great opportunity for them to purchase that property to allow for expansion. The project does comply with the city's master plan and has received approval from the TIF committee. The amount of the TIF is 525,000, and it is actually 7.7% of the total project cost. And with that, I'd ask for your approval and recommendation. I do know that, I believe Keith McCormick, the CFO of Quality Refrigerated Services, is also here.
Keith McCormick, 3301 G Street, here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number 14, case C-10-19-72, C-12-19-73. Applicant, Mark Wanakey for Omaha Public Schools. Request preliminary and final plat approval of OPS 60th Street addition, a minor plat located inside the city limits with rezoning from DR, R-3, R-7, C-C, and GI to R-4, along with approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District, location northeast of 60th and L Streets. And we're going to take agenda item 22 along with it, which is case C-7-19-84. Applicant, Mark Wanakey, Omaha Public Schools. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow a secondary educational facility in a R-4 district pending with the waiver of Section 55, 186, height to allow a 52-foot-tall structure. Location, northeast of 60th and L Streets.[1786.35] Location northeast of 60th and L Streets. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. Lana Bayless with DLR Group, 6457 Francis Street. I'm here on behalf of OPS Public Schools. The site, as you all probably know, is, yeah, not quite small enough, I guess, is located at 60th and L, the northeast intersect, northeast quadrant of that intersection. It's for a ninth grade through 12th grade high school. 283-plus-thousand gross floors area for the building with associated athletic facilities and parking and parent drop-off and stuff like that. So I'm here really to answer any questions that you may have. There is conditions from the planning department for the approval. We're fine with all of the conditions. I think there's one condition that the school district would like to discuss a little further, and that's the requirement to connect to the South Omaha Trail on the north side of the property. They have some concerns about security and allowing a secondary kind of backdoor entrance to the high school site from a fairly wooded area. So we wanted to bring that up as something that we want to continue to do.
Can you point that out on your map there?
Yeah, it's, the South Omaha Trail is right along the north side of the property, and it's pretty wooded from our property line to the trail. And so getting a connection to that location is one of the conditions of the approval, so.
Okay.
How many students at full capacity, do you think?
At full capacity, the student count that we're master-planning it for, I believe is 1,500. I'm right, okay. I'm a civil engineer. They tell me the number of students. The athletic facility, by the way, is master-planned to be like a full stadium, but they are not implementing it as a full stadium at this point. They are only going to provide about 500 seats for the stadium. The plan is that they would utilize the existing stadium that they have at Norris Middle School right now for, you know, your Friday Night Lights events that would occur for that high school.
So getting back to that trail there and that connection to the trail, I assume that there's going to be some students walking from areas that would utilize that trail?
I'm not convinced that that would be the case. For reference, the Ralston School District and the OPS School District boundary line is 60th Street. So there really aren't a ton of students that come to OPS unless they're opting in that are west of 60th Street. The majority of the student population to this school will be coming primarily from the south and the east.
What's the, what's the grade difference between the trail and the student parking lot there? Or is it on the same level?
The trail's probably about five feet higher than the parking lot, but there's a ditch in between them. There, you know, it was an old rail-
When you say a ditch, is that running water or?
Yes. So we would have to bridge over it or culvert or pipe that, obviously coordinating that with Parks Department because that's all on land that the Parks Department owns, not the school district.
Lights at the stadium at this time?
Not at this time.
Not at this time, okay.
Am I right?
Do you have a name for the school yet?
I do not know. We refer to it as OPS 60th and L New High School.
Quite a name. Quite a name.
Is there, their concern with the connection is more of outsiders being on the trail and having access to the school grounds, correct?
Correct.
Not students leaving?
Correct. Yeah. It's more, it's just another, it's another point that where they can, where unkind people can breach their property. And it's kind of on the backside of the, intentionally it's on the backside of the school building, so it's hard for them to watch it. I don't know what the other word is, so.
Where does it actually daylight or connect to the street system? Or is there a place where it connects to a sidewalk somewhere?
You know, I think it actually, the trail actually daylights quite a bit further east and west. Correct me, Mark, Eric, if you know. It seems like it's quite a bit further east and west from this property that the trail actually has a connection point.
We understand what issue, I do.
We need to bring Parks Department-
All right. Any other questions? Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Anyone against schools?
Scott, 1,500 Woodman Tower, one of the attorneys for OPS. Just to echo, break through what Lana said. And we've had terrific cooperation with the city on this project. They've been very helpful in every requirement. We're fine with, this presents some issues just because there's no sidewalk on the north side of it, access drive. It doesn't connect to any trail. So it is an access point from the school to the trail. That trail is primarily around an industrial area to the north. So we don't see any particular benefit to the area for that thing. And frankly, the connection was not in the budget as well. So we were asking if that requirement would be deleted from the approval of the rezoning in the subdivision.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Any other proponents?
I'm Julie Harris. I'm with BikeWalk Nebraska, 1905 Harney Street, where the state's bike and pedestrian advocacy organization. And I can answer your question here about the connections of the trail. The star here is where the school will be located. You can see that the South Omaha Trail connects all the way through over to the Keystone Trail, also connects all the way over here to the Field Club Trail. So this whole section of students would be served by the trail to the school location. It would be, it would be a shame to not create a trail connection to the school. This is a part of town where we have a lot of socio-economically challenged families who may not have access to a car, who may, kids may have to come on foot or on bike. As far as a security issue goes, we have elementary schools that have common space with public libraries. The other Omaha Public Schools is going to, I believe, have public space with the YMCA. There's much more direct security concerns in many of our other schools that have been successfully navigated. And so I don't see how a simple trail connection that serves to increase the options for kids to get to school safely is ranks on that same scale. We certainly understand that there are, you know, security issues that we would want to perhaps look at with the Parks Department with regards to the access there. But to not connect while we're doing the construction, which is the best time to do it, it's the easiest time to do it, would be a real missed opportunity.
You're not concerned about the secludedness of the trail?
I would say that the trail has open areas and less open areas. And if there needs to be some coordination to look at, you know, where it connects to the school property and whether there are trees there that are, need to be, that need to come down or it needs to come a different direction. I think we can have that conversation. But I think it's better to have those conversations and to try to make it happen than to reject it outright, and we have that opportunity.
Yeah, and I think, as you mentioned, you know, doing this during the construction phase is probably the best time to do it because you can mitigate any of those concerns possibly with some cameras, some security cameras around the perimeter and fairly inexpensively in today's world, so.
Yeah. I think it also presents an opportunity to get, to get kids and families there for sporting events and other things. You know, parking is always such an issue with high schools in particular. If we can get people coming in and out of this school in ways other than a car, it makes it safer for everyone, reduces congestion. Again, this is the time to do it. It would be a shame to have it nixed from the plan right off the get-go.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
John, I've got a question for you. Would you come up, please? Maybe you can answer this, maybe I can't. Lana talked about, go ahead.
John Williams, City of Omaha Parks Department.
Lana talked about a ditch with running water through it. If the trail is put in, whose responsibility is it to build the bridge that would go over to the site? Is that on City of Omaha land or would it be on the public school land?
The ditch, I think it's probably the, the trail that exists there is a form of railroad right-of-way, so there'd be ditches on either side. I think the ditch there, it's, and I'm not real familiar with that, but it's fairly shallow. If it's part of a trail connection to the city's trail, I believe that cost would fall upon who's building that trail connection. And that would exist within the right-of-way where the city trail is located. So it's on city property.
When you say that's relatively shallow, is that, is there water running through that ditch?
I don't know if, I don't believe it's a constant flow, like a stream. It's probably more in a storm, rain runoff type of event where the water would sheet off the trail, go into these ditches, and then be conveyed to a larger creek nearby. But I think it's more of an element in the wet situation.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional questions or comments from the board? Lana, would you come up again, please?
Certainly.
We had a discussion, you have to give your name and address.
Oh, again. Lana Bayless, DLR Group, 6457 Francis Street.
The light on the, is this right on the northwest corner of your site that's going to change from?
It's going to shift from-
Shift from Hillsdale?
To Patterson.
To Patterson. Have you had any, any comments from the neighbors in that neighborhood there?
We did have a neighborhood community meeting back in, yeah, March sometime. So we did, we notified neighbors within 900 feet of the school property, gave notification of a community meeting. It was actually, remember now, it was March, it was originally scheduled for March 8th. The weather, we ended up canceling that first meeting, and then we had a second meeting the week later. So I think it was March 13th. We had a community meeting on-site at the JD By Rider Building, which is on the school property, and allowed, presented the plans for both what we were doing on 60th Street and what we were going to do on L Street. And allowed that, had that opportunity for neighbors to see the plans and ask questions. We also, the week prior to that March 8th, I guess it was the last week in February, we had one-on-one personal conversations with directly adjacent property owners that would be affected by the public works improvements. So the two neighbors at the very northwest corner of our property, the business owners that are on the south side of L Street, and then the business owners that are directly adjacent to us on the east side of the property, we had personal meetings where we actually walked through the plan kind of one-on-one with them, so they knew what was going on. So yes, to answer your question.
Any great concern about moving that light in that, from the neighborhood, from Hillsdale down to Patterson?
We had a few people voice concerns about now they're, now I'm, now people are driving past my house instead of past my neighbor's house. We, the two property owner, and the reason we wanted to meet with the two property owners at the very northwest corner of our property is the improvements we need to do at L Street will require kind of them to have right-in, right-out access to their two lots that are up there. And we walked them through that during the personal presentation with them to make sure they were aware of what was going on. And at that time, they seemed okay with what, what we had proposed.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
You bet.
And so the folks on Hillsdale Avenue have been made aware that that light's going away?
Yes. They were given the opportunity to be made aware, whether they participated in the community meeting. I'm not exactly sure. So yes.
Okay. Any additional comments, questions? Eric?
Sure. Yeah, so with the two different cases of 14 and 22, so we have the plat, the preliminary and final plat. We have the zoning consolidation to R4 along with the MCC overlay. And then you have the conditional use permit. So just to touch on a few other items that haven't been brought up, there is quite a bit of grade and slope on the site. So, you know, the applicant is still finalizing those final plans regarding any retaining walls or what those slopes look like, so they'll have to follow any applicable building codes as well as the retaining wall requirements for the MCC overlay. As far as the trail connection, the planning department along with Parks Department, we believe the connection should be made. You know, we agree with Julie's comments that it would be a missed opportunity to not be able to provide that connection, you know, at this time with the construction of the site. You know, I understand always the concern of safety of schools. And, you know, I have three kids myself. So, you know, if there's any opportunity for the school in their operations to help, you know, make sure that's a safe environment, that's what I would encourage. For the conditional use permit, there is a waiver of height that is along with that request, which the planning board does have approval to make that waiver, so it does not need to go to the zoning board of appeals. For civic sites such as this, we are supportive. The highest element is listed at 52 feet for some of their performing arts area. There's some other portions of the building as well that's over the usual 35 feet. But we are supportive of that height waiver. There are a few landscaping items that will need to be cleaned up so that they're in compliance with the MCC overlay, so a revised acceptable landscape plan will need to be provided. But we are comfortable at this time to condition that as part of our approval. So I do just want to make a comment. I don't know where anybody is leaning with regards to the trail connection, but it is a condition as part of the plat as well as the conditional use permit. So, you know, even if, if the planning board votes to keep the trail in place, if the city council does eliminate that trail connection, that does not take care of the condition for the conditional use permit if you vote on that. So I just want to make sure that that's aware. You know, so looking at Agenda Item 14 first, we'll make a recommendation on that. You could vote, or if you have additional questions, you can ask me as well. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from DR, R3, R7 CC, and GI to R4, approval of the MCC overlay district, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the nine conditions in the recommendation report, and approval of the final plat subject to those conditions of preliminary plat, and submittal of a final acceptable, final subdivision agreement prior to city council.
Do we have a motion on Agenda Item Number 14?
I would move approval of the rezoning from DR, R3, R7 CC, and GI to R4, approval of the MCC major commercial corridor overlay district, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the nine conditions outlined in the department's recommendations, and approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of the preliminary plat and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to city council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda Item Number 22, recommendation.
Staff recommends approval of the requested waiver to Section 55, 186, height to allow maximum 52-foot-tall structure, and approval of the conditional use permit subject to the six conditions in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion on Agenda Item Number 22?
A motion for approval of the requested exception to Section 55, 186, height to allow a maximum 52-foot-tall structure, and approval of the conditional use permit subject to the six conditions in the recommendation report.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, I think if I have this correct, Agenda Item Number 20 was taken off of consent would be our next case. Agenda Item Number 20 is Case C10-5-64. Applicant Mark Sanford requests major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement for Torrey Square to allow multifamily residential. Location, 3833 North 153rd Street. May we hear from the applicant?
Good afternoon, Mark Sanford.
Representative, I should say.
Representing, Mark Sanford, I'm the architect for the project, representing Govan Homes, who is purchasing the property. And we are okay with the recommendations from the planning department. We will get those implemented and rec- department. We will get those implemented in requesting the layover. But we will take care, there's some parking that we hadn't developed yet that will be part of the, underneath the first level, so we will increase the parking area. And we will look at the tree mitigation that possibly didn't get taken care of in the first major development agreement, and we will take care of that in this piece and develop that property. It's a piece of property that already has a pad area, and that's the only location they're going to place a building. It will be a garage level on the, from the east side, which is a grade level, and then three stories above that will be apartments. And on the first level, there's also access to the west. I didn't bring any plans today because I was deemed for layover and we can definitely do that. I believe I directed the developer to contact any neighborhood association that's within the notification area. He has not done that yet, and I will force that on him, impress him a little bit more. Did I say force? I meant impress him to get that done, so.
Mark, we don't have, I don't see it anyway, a copy of the east elevation in our?
I probably, I only did two elevations at the time. I was short on time and needed to get it on the agenda quickly.
So, so it will show though that there are garage?
Yes.
Garages, how many garage units? Are you going to have?
There's probably nine garage units underneath the?
In that 27-unit complex?
In 27-unit complex. There's required to be 45 parking stalls. I believe there's 33. They are standard-sized stalls, so we probably will restripe some of those and then add the nine units to get closer to that 45 number and?
Do you have cross-easements with the other parking on the other building?
They don't have those in place yet, but I believe that's something that's been talked about, since that is an office building that is not using all the parking.
Right. Thanks.
And it is the same, I'm sorry, Mike, but it's the same owner of the property is selling that piece to Kebba Command, and we'll get that taken care of.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Come on down, give your name and address, sir.
Good afternoon, Chairman, and the board. My name's Travis Corliss. I live at 3914 North 152nd Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I just wanted to point out a couple things. Directly across the street to this one building apartment complex is a complex that has eight buildings that is not full. And then a quarter mile, or that's across the street to the south, quarter mile to the north, there's the Steeplechase Apartments. That is also a huge complex, you know, eight or nine buildings that also isn't at full capacity. I don't see, you know, what a 27-apartment complex building right here is going to do for anybody in the neighborhood besides for the sole purpose, or for the only party is the one that's building it and it's only profitable. I know it was already brought up that there's not enough parking for the complex. They said, you know, we didn't see any garages. They're going to make some of the spaces smaller to try to get to the required 45. I don't know how that is. There's also going to be no management on the property. There's management on the property to the south and the property a quarter mile to the north. I guess, you know, that's going to be increased traffic in the neighborhood along Spalding Street. I guess, I have what I was sent to me, because I live 300 feet from, and you guys might see this So coming along, you know, we have houses all along here, and then here's the apartments to the south. But if you travel down this road, that is the Village, or Torrey Pines Villas, and there's probably a series of tent houses, and then there's another road that's on the other side of the church here. A lot of people come through down here. We do have a speed bump, but, I mean, we already have a lot of traffic. I think putting, you know, another 45 more cars moving through the neighborhood, you know, with the kids, these two houses across the street right here have seven kids combined. I don't, I guess I don't see any benefits to putting, you know, a one-building, 27-unit apartment complex when we already have enough apartment complexes, you know, in the square block, in the square block radius. So, Mr. Pate, I know you said in an earlier case that you were concerned about the safety of the public, and I think we all are here, and, you know, I'd ask you to vote against it.
Let me ask you a question on that. You know, that site could be a restaurant.
Absolutely.
And that would bring, I think, more traffic to that area there. Would you oppose that?
I don't think, I mean, if it was a restaurant, they already have, it's a business right there. I don't know if it would or not. I think a traffic study would be, need to be done before we do anything to it, if it's just sitting there, so.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because, you know, apartment, you've got 27 units and, you know, I don't know what time of day or night they might come and go, but?
Yeah.
It's a big complex, I can stretch. But I understand that that, Spalding carries a lot of traffic right now.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
Thanks.
There's nothing there now, so. But I don't think a one-building apartment complex is, you know, what we need for that space when we already have so many that aren't at capacity, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Travis? Thank you, Travis.
Excellent, thanks for your time.
Any other opponents that wish to speak? Name and address, please.
My name's Mike Greschel. I'm at 3905 North 152nd Avenue.
Did you say Mike?
Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Just to go a little bit, when you were talking about the safety, I live just catty-corner from it. The traffic there is very bad. I mean, we got Torrey Pines, we have Steeplechase, a lot of traffic coming through there, day and night. The safety I have with apartment complexes just between Torrey Pines and Steeplechase since January, there's been 29 crimes, cars breaking into private domestic, a lot of things. Also, because I think has to do a lot with the apartments and that stuff, there has been five burglaries in our neighborhood since we've been annexed. Mine was one of them. Putting an apartment complex there with no management, I don't think it's a good thing. I work for the city. I work for the handyman program, the ECP program, and I'm around a lot of apartments, houses and that. When there's no management, there's a lot of trouble. And having that sitting there, I, it's not a good thing. Too many kids in the neighborhood. When you don't have management, you've got management in Torrey Pines, you have management in Steeplechase, and you still have the crime. If you take an apartment complex where there's no management, people are going to do what they want, come when they want. And for the kids in the area, I don't think it's good. I don't think it's a good idea at all.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Any others that wish to speak in opposition?
My name is Steve Brokhammer. I live at 153 Spalding Street. And I reiterate a little bit about the amount of traffic. This particular area is a cut-through street from 156 Rubbles to Spalding, turns out to the, now it's Casey, it used to be, kept a gas station there, cuts out to Maple Street. Lots of traffic too. There's maybe a traffic study should be done before they allow more people. And, I don't know, kids are a lot in this particular apartment building. The apartment building itself seems really out of sense for this particular area. This is a residential area. I live up the street, maybe 100 yards from where they want to put this apartment building. And we have a dozen townhomes. I've been one of the townhomes that they're talking about. And the people in these townhomes are my age. I'm 75, maybe 65 to 75, middle-income to a little bit higher than middle-income. Houses themselves are ranging from 100, from $250,000 to about $300,000 in these dozen townhomes. The church is across the street, and putting an apartment house kind of next to a church, I don't know, maybe, depends on the type of clientele in the apartment buildings themselves. And I certainly don't know what they intend there, whether it's high income or low income or whatever. Low income would probably be detrimental to the neighborhood, and?
I'm not sure if the low income or high income has anything to do with it.
Sure does. There's no kids whatsoever on our block, no kids whatsoever. And it seems a little different to have a lot of kids running around where older people are residing. Is that an answer to that, or you still disagree with that?
Well, I'm just, I mean?
It's a different issue.
Yeah.
I'm guessing.
I get what you're saying.
Yeah. It just seems common sense to me, okay. So that's my opinion. So that's my opinion is do, kind of do a reading on the traffic level and kind of think, take a look at that area, kind of look, why apartment building, residential houses across the street, no other apartments there. It's a street where he's talking about. And it just doesn't make sense at all, put that in there. And he's talking about a Russian, no Russian couldn't go in there.
It could.
There's Karabas, anything could go in there, but not realistically. There's studies to put a Russian in there.
You got a bar not too far from there?
Well, Karabas is not too far.
You got no right across, right around the corner there.
The piano bar is basically empty if you're going there.
Never been in there, so.
Okay. I mean, I'm not sure how long they're going to be there, but it hasn't worked out for that place and before that, so. Questions? Among the neighbors, I'm saying, don't do it. It's not a good place for them.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Any other opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Mark, did you want an opportunity to discuss, or you want to wait, or, okay. You bet. Any other comments or questions from the board?
So would our motion be just a little layover?
Well, well, let's hear from the city and then, if that was the recommendation, was a layover.
Yeah, so there's a layover recommendation, and much of that goes into the details of the proposed plan before us and whether, you know, inaccurate information or missing information or additional information that we need. Generally, multifamily residential is supported and can be allowed in mixed-use districts. Additionally, this site is within a quarter mile of West Maple Road, which as a state highway, the Omaha Master Plan does support an unlimited amount of residential units. You know, obviously, the market plays into whether developers, the amount of units they bring. You know, so the actual proposed use of multifamily residential for the site is, you know, we view it as, as a potential appropriate use. There was previously an office building that was shown on this site, and that's why the major amendment is before us, is for those changes. As it's outlined in the, in the recommendation report, we do need some clarification on property lines on the site plan as well as the garage information that Mark had mentioned to meet that zoning requirement for the number of parking stalls and additional building elevations. As the mixed-use agreement as a whole, there are some items that aren't clear in, in how this new proposal would impact those, such as open space and the previously approved tree mitigation plan. Specifically regarding traffic, we do have Public Works here. If you do want to ask questions about any traffic concerns, I wouldn't expect that 27 residential units with trips spaced out throughout the day would have a major impact on the street network, but Public Works is here if you have additional questions on that. Staff is recommending layover.
This is the same guy that has a daycare next door, right? We're concerned about cars coming over that parking lot?
No, that was close to 156.
Was it their own? Kind of the same, same configuration.
Any additional comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to lay over the major amendment to the Torrey Square mixed-use development agreement to allow the applicant to coordinate with city staff on drafting an acceptable mixed-use agreement amendment and provide you with the speed through G as needed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Karn?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved?
I believe that's the end of the agenda items. Chris, I need your help. Were we on the minutes from March? Were we?
We hadn't seen them, so we need to approve them.
We hadn't seen them, so we didn't.
Okay. Do we need, we need to make a motion on the minutes from March, pre-meeting and public meeting? Do we have a motion on the, on the pre-meeting?
The pre-meeting.
For March?
For March.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Karn?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do we have a motion on the public hearing meetings for March?
Motion to approve the minutes from the morgue meeting of April 3rd.
No. No March.
March.
No, we, we didn't get to the second.
That's not right.
From March, the hearing from March.
We're on March, Dave.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. You made a motion and Mike seconded it.
March, yeah, the March.
Lisa, will you record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Karn?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved?
Now the April pre-meeting, do we have a motion?
A motion for approval of the April pre-meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Karn?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved?
And now the public hearing meetings from April.
Now, motion to approve the April 3rd morgue meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Karn?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved?
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Karn?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn at 2:57 is approved.